We will call this meeting to order at 7:02. And we have no flag to say the -- oh, thank you. Tyler has presented the flag for us, so we will stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The holder's right there, so I'll get one to the room.
Hi. For people who have joined us online, if you're not a board member, or when you're not speaking, if you're making public comment, if you could turn off your camera, that would be great. But I will ask for an approval of the agenda. Do you have a motion?
Don't move. This is Liz.
Thank you, Liz. A second?
Sure.
Thanks, Lynn. Are there any additions? I would like personally to add a discussion of finishing up the goals work, because we didn't put it on this agenda, but I don't think it requires another meeting, but I want to know, you know, how much time people think they need. And I would put that under other legal business, if that's okay with everybody. Anything else?
Check if the video folks can hear.
Can the video folks hear us? I see lots of hands up.
Assuming since Liz motioned.
True, true.
True. Thank you, BJ. Okay. All right. Then if everyone who is in favor of adopting the agenda would either raise their hand -- I guess raising your hand is a good thing. One, two. Okay. Looks like that is unanimous. Thank you. And now we will go toward public input and announcements. So we have a number of people who are signed up to speak. One is Cara Fitzbocham. Hi, Cara.
Hey.
You have the floor. Yep. Just to make everybody aware, we have a three-minute time period, and you'll be warned a couple, you know, maybe 15, 20 seconds before that period of time is up. So, go ahead.
Could we identify themselves, just so that...
Yes. If you could identify yourself and the town that you are in.
Because there's a lot of...
There are a lot of people that nobody knows the name of. Okay. So, sorry again, Cara, go ahead.
All right. So I'm Cara. I'm in Shrew Carey, and my kids go to mountain school. I just wanted to speak tonight to add my voice of appreciation for the staff and school board members who work hard to create safe, nourishing, and engaging, and empowering learning environments for all our students. To thrive in their school environment, it's essential for each student to have a sense of belonging and connectedness in their school. And unfortunately, it can be common for LGBTQ students to feel unsupported, unseen, and unsafe without specific policies and opportunities that affirm our identities, or provide safe learning environments, and pursue equity in our schools. And I just want to show them grateful that our kids are in a district with school staff and board members who are committed to supporting all students, and who understand the essential role of creating safe and thriving learning spaces for LGBTQ students. And to the staff and board members who work to create those opportunities and spaces to affirm LGBTQ students and make them feel that they want, thank you for your dedicated and sometimes underappreciated work. And to the students in our learning community who may not always feel seen or safe, I just want to say that you have so many neighbors who aren't always at these meetings, who love you, who believe in you, who think you're incredible as you are, and can't wait to see all our gifts shine in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cara. Nan Dubin?
Hi, I'm Nan Dubin from East Wallingford. And I really cannot top what Cara said, but I can agree with it. I'm very grateful to this board for the hard work that you do, for all of our students. And I just really felt like I needed to come on tonight to let you know how appreciated you are by so many of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Nan. Gretchen Gould?
Hi, I just wanted to call in support of Mill River's staff for sharing any resources to families regarding LGBTQ. And I heard that there are some community members who are against it, but I just wanted to say students, staff, and family should not have to filter the information they can give or receive through someone else's discomfort. It's helpful to share resources with families, and the families can choose to access them or not. So, thank you so...
And Gretchen, could you identify yourself in your town before you sign off?
Oh, yeah. I'm Gretchen Gould, and I'm at Shrewsbury Mountain -- well, my kids are at Shrewsbury Mountain School in Mill River.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Davis Terrell?
Hi, my name is Davis Terrell, and I live in Shrewsbury.
I never get his name right.
I just want to start off by thanking the board for all the hard work they do. My comment is, one of the jobs of our school district is to support parents in educating their own children, providing materials, providing a reading list to parents who would like to teach their children in adversity, and it's perfectly reasonable, as each family has a chance, has a choice to access them or not. Our world is filled with many different ideas and viewpoints. There's never anything dangerous about broadening one's knowledge and learning to think critically of disparate sources of information. Thank you.
Thank you, Davis. Let's see. Morgan?
Hi, I'm Morgan Ober. I am a resident of Wallingford, Vermont, and grew up in Shrewsbury, Vermont, and am a queer member of the community. I find it very important that children have a place that is safe to be where they can be who they are. I can see many people on the screen and in this room who supported Morgan to be Morgan. I hope that that continues, and I would love to support that.
Thank you, Morgan. Appreciate your comment. Peg Sewell? Peg, you're muted.
This is Sewell. I'm in Wallingford, Vermont. My kids go to school from kindergarten through high school in Wallingford and at Mill River. I would especially like to appreciate, express my appreciation for faculty and staff for the support that they have over the years in giving to the LGBTQ population. It's been a source of satisfaction for me to have known students who have gone through the schools and been given what has been at times an unusual amount of support. In particular, I would like to express my agreement with the gentleman stated that one of the jobs of the school is to help educate the parents in how to best educate their kids. And I think that the parents of LGBTQ children face an unusually difficult challenge in knowing how to best support them. So anything that can be done in that light, I particularly appreciate. As a child and a therapist myself, I put out a notice at one point several years ago to all school guidance centers in Lockwood County for support, often as support, for parents of trans and gender-questioned students. Two weeks, I had calls from nine families of kids, 13-year-olds and younger. This has been a predominantly invisible and critically preserved population. Recently, Cross Country Shield has assigned a full-time leadership manager, whether it is specifically assisting his families in finding services within their network for people who aren't qualified in working with families and individuals in the LGBTQ population. Clearly, they wouldn't do that if this weren't a crying need. So I'd like to encourage the entire Mill River School District to continue to support these children and to provide whatever information that can be found to them and to their families, and to continue to work to provide a nonjudgmental and very supportive environment for them to learn. Thank you.
Thank you, Peg. I'm not sure if it's Cassie or Casey Ahern?
Right here.
Oh, hi. Your love.
Hi.
Sorry.
I'm Cassie Ahern, and I live in Wallingford, and have kids that go to school here. And I really would just like to echo the sentiments that have been already spoken for the support of this board and this building, and the people who care for the kids here, and support for the work that Peg does, which is needed and still very important. Thank you.
Thank you. We also had two comments that were submitted by email from people that couldn't come, and I will read them. This one is from Sharon Winnicky in Shrewsbury. "I believe that any attempt on bans on intellectual freedoms and the desire for information is an infringement and an inappropriate challenge on First Amendment rights. This very serious issue is not new, i.e. the 20,000 books burned by the fascist Nazis in Germany. But it is notable that the U.S. Supreme Court has upheld the ability for citizens in schools to see and read and to listen and to write about all sides of issues at their discretion. And yes, this means children in public schools. After all, this is why we go to school, to be educated about all sorts of diverse subjects and diverse people and cultures, and to learn about the world in general. I encourage the school board to lean on the backs of the many giants who came before us who fought to eliminate barriers to many and many of these diverse ideas. Please vote to support our teachers and to support intellectual freedom and to protect our First Amendment rights for all people, young and old." Thank you. And then we also have a comment from Meadow Squire from Tinmouth. "I am addressing the school board, and I am here not just to represent myself, but to be the voice for many. You may not see us at every meeting, but we see you. We see how you listen. We see your consideration. We see your commitment to the values and mission of our schools. Each and every one of you is appreciated for your service to our community and your dedication to our students. Thank you for your perseverance. We see you. We need you. We value you." Thank you to both Sharon and Meadow. And that concludes public comment unless there is anyone else that forgot to sign up.
I just have a quick question for the board.
Yes, go ahead, Eric.
My name is Eric Solza, and I'm a Rutland resident. It's just, I'm just wondering why the public is addressing the school board and reminding that they really respect the work that you're doing, but that the gay, lesbian, community, transgender needs to be supported, or continue to be.
Was that a question?
It was a question, yes.
Okay.
It was a wonder why.
Why do we...
Why is the discussion centered around this today? What is happening in the community? That everyone is coming together to talk about this?
I guess, I mean, we're done with public comment, so we're in the respond to the public, which we usually respond to each other, but to the public. There was a post that...
Can I suggest that we hear from our equity coordinator?
Sure.
Have a response to that, just to explain why this is an important topic for us to be doing.
That's fine, Maria. Thank you. I obviously wasn't doing very well, but go ahead.
Yeah, the table there, Joey. Right there. Hi, guys. I'm Jody Stewart-Ruck, rugby director. So, this is an important thing every single day in our schools, because we know we have kids that are underserved and are not getting all of their needs met, and are not showing up every single day feeling fully seen, appreciated, and loved. So it's on the tongues of your school administrators and teachers on the daily. The reason I believe it might be coming up right now is because we received unofficial word of a concern about a resource list that was put on a private parent Facebook group. And so I'm assuming that in that community conversation on that private Facebook group, a lot of feelings about that resource list, which was meant to serve gender nonconforming and transgendered youth, parents who are seeking more information, that maybe that dialogue opened up some good conversation. And so, you know, I want to thank everybody for that dialogue and for that support for this hard work. We do really care deeply in doing a better job every single day than the day before to support our LGBTQIA students. We are working to learn so that we can do better. We're working as a staff. We're doing our own reading. We are talking to our kiddos. If you are the parent of a gender nonconforming or transgendered student in our schools, or a student who would like to tell us how we can better serve you, I encourage you to reach out. My email is jruck@millriverschools.org. That's what I got.
Thank you, Jody. Are there any other board members that have responses to any of the public comments?
Thank you. Just straight up, thank you. We've had a lot of conversations, but it's good to actually hear some appreciation and that the work we're doing is helpful, so.
I would like to echo that sentiment. I don't have really good words, and I'm afraid that my voice will falter and fail me, but thank you.
Are there any other board comments before we move on? Okay, I appreciate all the comments that people submitted, and you were heard and appreciated. Thank you. And we will move on to approval of the minutes of 11:17. If we could have a motion to...
Don't move. This is Liz.
Thank you, Liz. Second? Lynn, thank you. Okay. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes as submitted? Hearing none. If I could see a show of hands, please, for approval of the minutes. One, two...
I wasn't there, so...
Oh, okay.
Does Doug have a statement?
Yes.
So I...
A reminder to non-board members, if you could turn your cameras off, just to make it simpler for people in the room of the screen.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, and Doug voted?
I'm not going to vote yes or no. I was pretty much kept out of the board meeting that day, sitting in that little table. Mine would have stained.
Okay. I'm going to ask for abstentions in a sec. Okay, are there people that are not in support of the minutes? That's a no. Are there abstentions?
Yes.
Okay, Matt and Doug. And anybody else? No. Okay, thank you. Now, we have the student board member update. I think we see them over here. Tyler.
Okay. So I'd like to introduce to you three of our students, two juniors and one senior. This is Sidney Moser, junior, Lacy Lanfair, junior, and then Chris Burnett, who's a senior. They've all expressed interest in becoming a student rep for the school board, and I asked them to come tonight to see what this is all about. We haven't yet firmed up a process for how this might look after this meeting. I know, Adrian, you did share an email with me of maybe saying we'd go with two and have, you know, maybe some of them is remote, or a reserve, or something like that. Or maybe we just do all three. We'll see. I want to see what their interest is after tonight's meeting, and then we'll go from there.
Do you guys have any questions for us? Just going to watch? Listen?
I think they're taking it all in tonight.
Okay. All right. We don't usually get this much praise. It's very nice. So don't get used to it.
Come to every meeting, please. Every meeting.
Lynn, go ahead.
Just a couple of suggestions. There's a website, the Vermont School Board Association, that talks about students being part of the school board, and it gives a lot of ideas of what they can look for and what to expect. If you want to Google that, or they want to Google that, I think that would be helpful. And I would also suggest, and I have no problem with all three of them being a part, I think the more, it makes it easier on all of them. Well, that's just my opinion.
We planned, I haven't told them this yet, I was going to tell them later today, but I do plan to debrief with you guys tomorrow morning, and we'll talk through some scenarios. And what we plan is to have something firmly in place for the next board meeting, December 15. And before, if you have any more questions about the student rep, I do have one more thing I wanted to bring up, but I don't want to jump ahead.
I don't see any other questions, so go ahead.
Okay. So I just wanted to bring some attention. Kim and Ari asked me to present this today at the board meeting for some of our students, student athletes who received some honors from the fall season. So, for football, Connor Lepicolo, tight end, first team, and linebacker honorable mention, and represented Mill River in the North-South Classic Football Game. Anthony Cavallari, quarterback, second team. He's also a MSJ student who plays for us from MSJ. Ross Badgley is running back honorable mention. Caleb Jepson, offensive lineman honorable mention. Jeremy McGee, offensive lineman honorable mention, and defensive line honorable mention. Adam Schum is punter, second team, and defensive back honorable mention. And then Keegan Greeley, another MSJ student, is defensive back honorable mention. For soccer, Mallory Carlson and Tyler Corey made the Vermont Soccer Coaches Association All-State Team. Mallory Carlson, Carlson, excuse me, made the first team for SVL, so in Vermont League. Julia Deppert, Kyla Sheehy, Ali Usher, and Sierra Carey, honorable mention for the SVL. Tyler Corey was named Rutland Herald's Player of the Year. Tyler Corey was also the SVL first team. And Tyler was also selected for the Twin State game, which is being played in July of this coming summer. Then lastly, for cross-country, Anka Heinz was named Rutland Herald's Player of the Year and Runner of the Year, or there's two, and also first team for the SVL. And then Olivia Haley was the first-team SVL. And also, the girls' cross-country team won the SVL, and that team is Anka Heinz, Olivia Haley, Faith Murray, and Willis Seo. So, really good. I mean...
That's all great news.
Yeah, it's really cool to hear so many names doing so, doing really awesome work. So, proud of them.
Thank you for sharing that, and thank Kim.
Yep.
Okay. Moving along, we have Student Support Systems Presentation, Part One.
Yes, so what we've got for you tonight is a presentation on the systems of student support that we have in the district. This is the first of two. So Jody Stewart-Ruck, Coral Stone, and Deborah Gardner-Vash will be presenting. Coral and Deborah are virtual, so they'll probably be doing some screen sharing for their portions, and Jody obviously is with us, but maybe not doing this one.
I am with you, but it's their presentation.
Yeah, Jody's with us, but Coral and Deborah are presenting. So Deborah Coral, we'll turn over to you and let you get started.
All right. Good evening, everyone. The format this evening is a little bit, we'll just go a little bit to the slide and whatnot, so I'm going to be doing my best to sort of be talking to you and trying to make eye contact with those of you that I can see. I had prepared a form of an in-person presentation, so I'm going to punt a little bit on some of that information this evening, just to see you're aware. One of the things that I have requested to come back to you and provide information about is the special education monitoring process. It's very important that our board, in our community, just be aware of some of the requirements of that process and what it means. So I'm just going to take a few minutes this evening to give you what I would call the very broad strokes of that process, because it is not possible to give you, you know, the level of detail that I wish I could in a, you know, a 10- or 15-minute presentation. So, in earlier appearances that I've made for the board, I have spoken with you about this monitoring process that is happening for our district this year. It's a very comprehensive process that really asks and requires of us to reflect very deeply on the outcomes that relate to how we are doing things and how we are practicing with regard to serving our students with disabilities. Although I will say that this year, the monitoring process is actually going to require us to even go a little bit deeper in terms of really looking at and reflecting on how we are serving all of our students. And what I mean by that is that, you know, in years past, this monitoring process has really, really focused on the delivery of special education services. But as time has gone on and educational practice has evolved, you know, we've worked really, really hard at STEEP Education Systems to develop this model that we've worked with you on over the years called Multi-Tierred Systems of Support. And my colleague and my dear friend Deborah, she's going to do some education with you on that piece in a little bit, so I'm not going to steal her thunder, except to just advise you that this process is going to be a lot more in-depth for us as the year goes on. In terms of monitoring, our district will be required to submit, you know, an intense amount of documentation and reflection around 17 different performance indicators. And I'm not going to name them all off. I don't think that does justice to do that to you, but there are 17 different areas that the states and the federal government are going to sort of take a look at what we're doing and how well we are doing it. And some of those indicators, I have maybe shared information with you previously, but some of them include things like our discipline procedures and practices. Another indicator is, in what types of settings are we serving our students with disabilities? So are we truly including them in inclusive and equitable classrooms? Are we disproportionately excluding students with disabilities? Are we disproportionately suspending any population of students? So we have to take a really, we have to take a really comprehensive look at data that is really district-wide, and then sort of put that together, and then have to reflect in an essay about what we're seeing and what it tells us about our practice. Those are just a couple of the indicators. Then there are other indicators, like how well are we serving our littlest children, so ages three, four, and five? How are we serving the population of children that are those smaller ages but that have disabilities and very different needs as well? So that's an indicator. Another indicator that I believe that our district has always done a heck of a job with, and will continue to do a heck of a job with, but looks at graduation rates and dropout rates, because obviously we know that outcomes for students that drop out or that don't finish their educational program, those can be concerning trends, and so we have to look at those numbers and analyze them. So again, you have a really, really broad, broad, broad process of all these different areas that we are analyzing and working to sort out the data. In terms of the reflective sort of process that is required through the monitoring, this is new this year, and I'm going to keep saying that, number one, because I'm asking for your grace, we haven't used this monitoring sort of process before. So it is something that folks like myself, directors, we're all learning it and trying to do our very best with it too, but also knowing that it's a challenging amount of work to be able to do it and do it the way that is intended. So with regard to that, there is the special education piece of this, of course, which is relative specifically to our students who have IEPs or Individual Education Plans. And with regard to that, we'll be looking at, hey, are we in compliance with timelines that we have to be in compliance with? Are we completing tasks that the federal government expects of us? Are we, you know, spending our funding the way that we're supposed to, and things like that? And those are just sorts of standard things that people in my position think about an awful lot. But the part that I will say to the board that I actually find somewhat enjoyable, it was a little weird to say, the part of this process that I'm actually finding somewhat enjoyable and rewarding is, we are required this year to take a much deeper dive into looking at what constitutes adequate progress with regard to, like, IEP goals and things like that. And all of you know that, but, you know, we've got a lot of kids who have been... And, all of you know that, but, you know, we've got a lot of kids who have been out of school, or, you know, that are still coming back from the school shutdown period, and, you know, the long-term impacts of school closures and COVID-related dynamics, we don't really know what the long-term impact is, except, whoa, is here and we're grappling with it. So to have a process in place this year, where we're really trying to take a really deep and comprehensive look, child by child, at what progress looks like towards IEP goals has just been kind of the neat thing to be doing. And ultimately, all of that data is going to be compiled, and it will be used to make a determination about how we're doing and what we might do or not do differently. And then, you know, the last piece, I will just say to the board, there have been different variations of conversation around special education policy, and that has not been something that we really broached with this board. Typically, the understanding of policy is that if it's something that's in the law or the statute, we don't really have a policy on it. But we're being pushed in our thinking a little bit this year, that special education law and statute maybe should be in policy, and so we're all kind of grappling with what that means and what that looks like, and how very different that is from earlier trainings that we've all had around the SBA stuff and things like that. So, it's very likely that at some point, you know, within the next months, we might be having another conversation perhaps about areas we need to tighten up policy or something like that. But right now, that's sort of a, that's a down-the-road thing, and that's something that we'll come to when the time is more appropriate. Right now, our focus is on exactly what my friend and colleague Jody indicated earlier. Our emphasis is really on serving all of our learners, meeting their needs the very best ways that we can with whatever we need to do that. And so, that's really where we're focusing right now in terms of looking at how we're doing around monitoring. So, Deborah's going to talk to you a little bit about some of the more system that we're using around, you know, intervention, and particularly with regard to like literacy development, which has really become a big focus for us this year. But before she steps in, I just want to kind of shut up and see if there are questions for me. Again, I did have slides prepared, but I just, just looking at the screen and folks that are on and off, I just, not sure that's the best venue this evening to do that, so we might do that at another time, but... So if there are questions, you're going to have to tell me, because I'm not seeing everybody. See Liz, there she goes.
I have my not-great headset on, so I just want to thank you, Coral, and thank Jody, and thank really all of our district leaders and educators for the work that you do on behalf of all of our children every day. I am just so grateful for all of you and for living in this community. Really heartfelt thanks.
Coral, I'm wondering, this is Adrienne, when you think you might be ready to give us a... I mean, you've set up all sorts of things that we're going to be waiting to hear about.
Yeah, I did do that, didn't I?
You did.
Yeah, I did. So our first submission, Adrienne, on monitoring is due January 15th.
Okay.
Which seems far away, but yeah, it's not, I never realized that. So sometime probably, I would say by the end of January, we'll start the next round of conversation relating to the back half of monitoring, because that's the big part.
Thanks very much, I'm looking forward to it. Does anybody else have comments? Okay, you can move through your... I'm not sure who's being handed off to.
Deborah, hers will be way more riveting than mine, I think.
I am going to attempt to present my whole screen, so we'll see how well this works. I won't be able to see you when I do this, so somebody can hopefully call her out if you're not seeing this.
Hello?
Hey, you're going to see this now?
Yep, you're all good.
So I am going to give an update about literacy and intervention. We are doing an awful lot of work this year in early literacy, and I think by this point everybody knows that educators love acronyms. So this is, newest acronym is ELNIC, which stands for Early Literacy, and the NIC is Network Improvement Community. We decided to join this particular group, Networked Improvement Community. It's being run as a joint effort between the Vermont Agency of Education and an organization called CCSO, which is Council of Chief State School Officers, and also a professor that we have used for a lot of in-house PD before, as far as like reading, Dr. Nell Dugout of the University of Washington. There are only, I think, 23, there are 23 people in the whole state, and then there are a number of other states that are also involved. Eleven of the people on the Vermont team come from our school district. It's really pretty incredible, because it's a two-and-a-half-hour evening meeting a month that people have committed to. And we have, you know, two of our interventionists, we're reading specialists, we have two kindergarten teachers, we have three preschool teachers, we have our early ed intervention para, Coral, and myself, and Maggie Haynes, all taking part in this NIC. So I'm just briefly going to tell you a little bit about what it is we've done so far. So we were able to take some basic baseline data for our preschool students, really looking at our four-year-olds. We had preschool students were drawing something, we're asking them to orally generate a sentence about their drawing, and then asking them to write what they can, and then just taking some data about whether there are any letters involved, if they're just sort of random, maybe they write their name, or maybe they can use some initial consonants. So you're getting a real variety, I think. So you've got some kids who are really just still in a scribbling kind of stage, you've got kids who are drawing a few letters. One of the little ones on the top has an MF, and it was for my family, so the initial consonants were there, and then labeled, and, you know, done to some kindergarten writing, "I am a dragon." So there's quite a variety. Then for kindergarten, we were looking at how well kids were decoding, so that's reading, getting their standard CDC words, and then how well they could do with writing those same kinds of words. So, and the samples again for kindergarten. Also, there's a lot, you know, a lot of difference what kids can do at the beginning of kindergarten. So our broad aim, for all of the states that are working together in this, is that all pre-pay-based students, you know, will improve their foundational reading and writing skills. But we have some, two real specific aims, and one is that by the end of prepay, that all prepay students occurring kindergarten in our district, we'd be able to plausibly represent in writing the first-sounding most words in a personally meaning-of-the-plex meaning in something that they're saying or generating. And that by the end of kindergarten, they can all read and write the regular CDC words. Anyway, that project is really exciting and is taking an awful lot of our time. We also, Coral and I last spring, had not known that ELNIC was going to happen, and we had already taken on another early literacy project that was called the ALP project, the Early Literacy Biological Awareness Project. And that was a collaboration between Coral and Nancy Girasone, who's been a long time SLP in our district, and Anna Weatherhoff, who is our early ed intervention para educator has a background in speech, took some special trainings this summer. And that's something where we're providing some whole-class biological awareness activities, and also some were small group supports at those Wallingford and Clarendon, because they're our larger schools.
Deborah, can I just jump in there real quick and just add? We've already brainstormed and talked, and we're super excited about coming back to the board to talk more at another time, but I'll just say that in the meantime, the ELPA that she just described, that is an action research project that she and I entered into and secured federal grant funding to be able to carry out, and we are, we've largely committed to a two-year cycle, but that project allows us to, like, very, very carefully gather and study and interpret early literacy data from our preschool and kindergarten students. And so that's what we are engaging in as part of the research that we're doing.
And really, these two projects will end up coming together and supporting each other, but it definitely has been a lot of early literacy focus. And then to talk a little bit about the last couple of years, we've also had literacy work groups that have been working. We initially were charged with some of the work around guaranteed and viable curriculum. That involved identifying some of our priority performance indicators. Some of that work was done with ELA, 712, and we're working on the ELA drafts, they actually were done for K6 last school year. Some of that process you may be familiar with, that the idea of guaranteed, you're sort of unpacking what the proficiencies are, combining perhaps some of your performance indicators, prioritizing which ones are most important, and in some cases even having some of them that you are not going to necessarily assess. So this is what this would look like. So we started by having our performance indicators, all of the ELA performance indicators listed out for every single grade, K6. And we had representatives from every school and every grade band, and so we would have discussions, and we'd take the information back to their teams. We prioritized which were the, you know, high and medium priority standards, then for the ones that were the targeted standards, they wrote essential learning targets. And we just started this fall going back in and looking at the how and when this would be assessed. This will end up giving us a little better coordination across all our schools of what we're doing and when and how specifically we are assessing it. So those were groups also. We have just done some work with the Common Writing Assessments, those happened from K to 12, and that just was due yesterday. So we are working tomorrow to look through some of those Common Writing Assessments. We also are going to be looking at some of the, what is actually being taught in, you know, Belize units, which are ways that often science and social studies is being integrated with some of our literacy work. So those curriculum maps are going to be revisited. The Common Writing Assessment that was just given was a simple prompt, you know, tell about a real-life experience of yours or someone you know that fits one of these two titles. That was fun, or that was no fun. And so what we end up doing with these, right now, because our schools are smaller, we don't have multiple teachers at the schools, and we're teaching the same grades and grade levels. And so by getting a Common Writing Assessment like this in fall and spring, it allows us to put together some packets of student work that, you know, have happened in all four of the elementary schools, or across different courses, from 712 in the high school, and lets teachers, you know, do some assessment and also have some real conversations about what they're seeing as trends and what they're noticing that other students do well at other schools. So, I'm going to switch to talking a little bit about intervention right now. So another big component of our literacy work has been our intervention team. We have four reading interventionists, or ELA interventionists, and one math interventionist. This has allowed us to have a full-time person left at each of the larger schools and split the second person between a mountain school and one of the larger schools. So five days a week, we're being able to offer intervention at Clarendon and Wallingford. Tenmouth has only three days a week due to their schedule, but Shrewsbury has four days a week, and we also have a weekly meeting time. That particular component has been really powerful, because it's given us the time to really look at data, to have discussions, to do our own PLCs, where we're really studying and learning more together, looking at our own instructional practices. And just in the last month, I've had two other area districts arrange meetings to talk with, meetings, we talk with people in their districts about how intervention has worked here, because we really have had some, had some really good successes with that. We have protocols set up for how students are identified, so not only looking at some of our universal data, such as our STAR 360, but also looking at some of the school-based, classroom-based data, looking also at our Constance Now, which is our reading programs' benchmark assessment system, looking at teacher recommendations, all sorts of things. We have a lot of progress monitoring built in. The EST is a very important part of this, where students are brought there, parents are brought in, plans are made, measurable goals are written, and then they're re-monitored every eight to 12 weeks at the EST level. So, one of the things that we also do is at the end of each year, we analyze all the data from intervention. We have some of our ELA data. You'll see students that were marked in green here in this little sample have made more than a year and a half to two years growth in the months they were in intervention. The yellow, it made one to one and a half years growth, and the red had made less than a year's growth. One of the things that we find is that most students who don't make more than a year's growth are students who have high absentee rates. So you can see a couple of the ones that were marked in red there. You know, so if you look at first grade, you've got two of the students who made a year and a half to two years, one that made about a year and a half growth, and then one that didn't make the growth, and they had 20 absences. And that's something that we see really in paths that way. We're also able to, our intervention team, they participate in fieldwork and team meetings at the schools there, they're members of our ESPs, our educational support teams, they help with all of the classroom assessments that have to happen through our reading program, they're actively involved right now in our NIC. We do, you know, sometimes there are even leaned on, just recently, you had a team who was leading a data analysis at one of the elementary schools. They'll go in and model lessons, our math intervention, it works, because we only have one math interventionist that relies on a lot of modeling and planning and support, it's more classroom instruction, but that also can happen. Like this year, we had to be flexible, we have a classroom in one of the schools that has had a teacher out on maternity leave, had a, you know, had a sub there, and we've really helped provide a lot of classroom instruction and planning. They also are an important piece of looking at some of that curriculum work that we've done, and with new programs. So, as you can tell, we've been very busy in the literacy and intervention world, a lot of things to be excited about, and I'm going to try to stop presenting here and see if I can see people again, because for all I know, I've been talking to myself this whole time. There you go, questions?
I think you've overwhelmed us, Deborah.
With how many words I could fit into my 15-minute time?
Well...
Hi, Deborah, thank you so much for that. So my mom got her Ph.D. in language, literacy, and learning while I was in college, which was very inspirational for me, and I don't know why I regret the dissertation, but I did. And so I know, first, you know, I know through her research, but also the classroom, sure the effects of biological spelling on early ed- the effects of biological spelling on early, early ed students literacy development. And so I just want to applaud you. I want to applaud all of the teachers involved in this. This is fantastic.
Yes, it's really been amazing at a time that teachers have so much else on their plate for people to be willing to put in the energy for this. It has been terrific.
It's a wonderful opportunity for our students. Thank you.
It is.
Just a comment for the board and for the public. You know, the, the reason we share these presentations with you is there are lots of distractions. There's a lot of noise. There's this minor global pandemic going on. We have community dynamics that we see, you experience as well, that can be very distracting. We have teachers, staff, support staff, leaders, board members who are exhausted. Everybody's doing their darndest to make sure that the operation keeps plugging ahead and to block out the noise. And the reason we share this information with you is we want you to see tangibly that we have folks in the system that work for you, that are dedicated, that are passionate, that are busting their tails in organized deliberate ways that are paying dividends. Now, none of this stuff is magic. None of it changes anything overnight. But I happen to believe, and I think you do, because we talk about goals a lot, if you set a goal and you continually make moves toward that goal, you will get to that goal. And if we're playing the long game of making sure that we take this system of schools to the place that we all want it to go, it's these types of structures and systems that get us there with consistent and deliberate energy and support. And so we appreciate, number one, your support. I appreciate the folks that make these things happen, but there's a lot of people behind the scenes that do it as well. So I hope that's a takeaway that you have tonight, that, that things are moving and they're moving in a good direction.
Thank you both, Coral and Deborah. That, we look forward to the next, the next installment, but it sounds like a tremendous amount of work is being done. Thank you. Covid dynamic, our dynamics update.
Yeah, so if you recall at the start of the school year, you know, we talked about, hey, we're going to be masked to a point that's undetermined and we'll see how things go. And we've all been seeing how things have been going. It doesn't bring me any joy to say that we are in the most difficult COVID stretch that we've experienced here as a district, and we continue, I would say, to be more fortunate than other districts around us who have had to navigate more. Just to give you some tangible things, we currently have 17, 1-7 active cases in the district right now that have students out and staff out in different levels of quarantine. In some of those cases, we have full classrooms that are quarantined. Those tend to be the elementary classrooms because of the time components of how an elementary class operates compared to classes here at Mill River where students are moving around more frequently, which means they're around each other for less duration. The challenge with our health services team is that they are working every day, all day, on managing COVID. So the, the normal work of a school health office, you know, if you think of skinned knees and bumped elbows and headaches and whatnot, like that still gets addressed, but that is addressed secondary to the work of COVID, which involves keeping track of who's where, what's going on, contacting families, explaining the contact tracing, et cetera. So it's a significant, significant lift. Couple positive things to share, we have made some adjustments to our contact tracing process to try to be as streamlined and as efficient as possible so that we don't completely burn our nursing staff out because we are approaching that, that flex point that could become problematic. We are starting to access volunteers that have specific experiences. So as an example, I've been working with the Wallingford Rotary and identifying there are some former educators and former healthcare professionals in that group that meet some of the HIPAA and FERPA obligations that we need to utilize. And so we're going to be having some volunteers helping us out with the contact part of the contact tracing, not the tracing and decision-making, but the communication side of things. And there's also even a resource that we're able to access through the state where a temp agency is providing us access to an individual or a couple individuals who may be able to help us out with some of the just administrative, you know, documentation stuff, not, not the intense aspects of the contact tracing, but the, the time-consuming data-based aspects. I just want to thank our health team for everything they do. I want to thank our administrators because they play a key role in that. And I truly want to thank our, our parents when we have cases that pop up in the community. We are getting notified quickly. You know, we tend to find out before the Department of Health contacts us to tell us about it, and we end up sharing with, with VDH what we are seeing and what we're experiencing. If you asked me to project forward, I don't feel super encouraged right now. I feel like there is light in a tunnel that's way out there. I think the variables that affect us getting to that light are vaccine for the youngest kids running its course and getting to, to levels that are helpful. Give you some tangible numbers, we just got our vaccination rate here in this building at Mill River, that's 57%, 5-7. If you think about that target of 80, you know, we're still a ways off from that. That 57 has not been budging much recently, so we may be about capped out there. We had our second vaccine clinics in our elementary schools at Clarendon and Wallingford yesterday and today, so we're seeing our younger students that are accessing that. Those numbers are going to start to come on board and we'll see the positive effects of that. And I think we've all heard that there are allegedly other treatments that the pharmaceutical companies are working on, you know, kind of along the lines of like a flu treatment, a COVID treatment, if you will, that may be helpful. There was a time that I was saying to myself, hey, by January, maybe we won't be in masks anymore and we'll be through this. I've scrapped that in my mind. I've then told myself, well, maybe by March or so, we might, you know, be, be there and through this. I'm kind of scrapping that in my mind. It feels like, not to be doomsday day, but it feels like this is going to be a full school year of this experience. Fortunately or unfortunately, this has become normal. You know, we've become acclimated to this in the school environment and we're operating and we're doing everything we can. So I'll continue to keep you updated. I'm hoping that as we get through the holidays, we'll see those high case rates start to drop, but we all understand now how this works. And this, this all has to run its course and, and work its way through. And we'll also keep our fingers crossed that the new variant or future variants, you know, tend out to be 10, excuse me, end up being non-factors, you know, things that we don't have to worry about or deal with, but challenging times for sure. Any comments or questions in the COVID realm?
Okay, wouldn't mind hearing from them. How's your day-to-day going?
Yeah.
Yeah. We can't get rid of the masks, but what do you see?
Yeah, introduce yourself and your age and that kind of stuff when you have sign to.
I'm Chris Verbanet. I'm from Wallingford, East Wallingford, Vermont, more specifically. I'm 18 and like Mr. Weedman said, I am a senior at Mill River. Been coming here since, since 7th grade and all the way throughout. Yeah.
How's the mask?
How's the COVID, dealing with COVID and being in school?
From last year and going on this year, I have noticed that there are stricter and more teachers putting their foot down about it, which is great. I love it. But there are students who still completely disregard the fact that it's a problem. They still, they still wear their mask incorrectly, even below their chin, even when they aren't told to pull it up. It's just annoying, honestly, to put it that way.
Fair enough, fair enough.
I don't want to get shut down again. Hit the remote.
I'm Lacey. I'm a junior. I've been in this district since preschool. I'm from Clarendon. I think the COVID, I think how our teachers are handling COVID is really great and I appreciate them for that. I, like Chris said, he couldn't have said it better. Kids are still disregarding the fact that we should be wearing our masks correctly, which is unfortunate, but I think we're all handling it like we can. And like I said, I really appreciate our teachers and staff that help hold that down.
I'm Sydney Moser. I've been in this district for, since kindergarten and preschool. I am a junior. And they both said it really well. I don't know how else to say it, but I think, I just, it, it's annoying, honestly, how teachers have to say, put your mask up multiple times a day, and the kids don't follow that. They wear it under their nose, under their chin, and yeah.
An add-on that I was just thinking, all, you know, all classrooms are safe, everyone's six feet, you know, but the lunch situation, that's for me probably the scariest time to be around people because the way it's set up, different places for kids to eat, people do other masks up and everything, but there'll be times, and it's every, every day you'll see groups of people within six feet talking face-to-face with their masks on. And just thinking, I don't know if it could be something that we could do, but instead of eating in the auditorium, indoor lunchrooms, maybe going back to the classrooms to eat because I feel like there's more space per classroom and most of the classes aren't big like they used to be, kind of small, smaller.
Beautiful. Chris, could I suggest, Mr. Weedman said he was going to debrief with you folks tomorrow. Say that. Say that loud and clear. Let your voice be heard on that.
All right.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Does anybody else have any comments on? Anybody on virtual? We are actually going into a quick hybrid board meeting debrief, just, I guess, to see, do people think it's worth it, you know, working? I don't know what else you wanted to, to bring up with that.
Yeah, so this was put on the agenda on the heel. Have you done the retreat a week or two ago in kind of a hybrid format? But this is obviously our first one. Personal opinion, the logistics have worked better than I imagined. I don't know if other folks feel that way, but I'd be curious in the board's opinion in terms of moving forward as we enter these winter months, do we land on this is the default board meeting format for a stretch, just to give people flexibility and options, or it's worth the conversation to decide what happens next? Maria?
The people who are remote.
Yeah, Maria, go ahead.
Thanks, yeah. As someone who's been remote for the last two meetings, including the retreat, I really appreciate the option. And I feel like I can hear people really well, sound quality is good. I can't see the people who are on site, but I know who you are. So I think maybe come March, in the event that we have new board members, we might have to do a better job of, of people who are on site introducing themselves and letting people know who is speaking. But other than that, I feel like it comes in really well and I do feel like I can take, I can take part in the meeting, I can listen, I can hear everybody and I can focus. I think it's really, it's really successful from my point of view, I think.
Yes, Sasha?
Things are working well for me as well. I can tell you that I, today, for example, I really have appreciated this format as I know I've just come back from Thanksgiving where I, you know, we've tested before we all convene, but I was at Thanksgiving in Massachusetts with my in-laws and I hadn't been around that many people in a while. So it's been, it's been a good safety precaution for me as I wait the results of my COVID test. I think I could be a good source, but just, just knowing that I can take that action to protect our fellow board members as well, I'm really grateful for it. I also appreciated seeing that members of the public did join briefly for public comment. I hope that the public will be continued if we do utilize this sort of model for, you know, whatever period of time here. I hope that the public will continue to be encouraged to participate however they are able. Again, glad to see that people have utilized it.
Except for Liz.
Hi, everybody. So I just, I like the option of being home. One, as a working parent, it makes my leg a little less hectic, but also full disclosure, I am a classroom teacher. I had a close contact yesterday, right? I had a close contact right before Thanksgiving. I don't ever want to be a vector for a transmissible disease and, you know, infect one of my fellow board members or a community member. So this is my way of doing my part to stop the transmission. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. We appreciate it. I guess I have to make a comment in terms of being the chair. I have not tried to be remote because I really can't figure out how it would work. So I'll continue to be coming in person, I mean, you know, depending on, on illness or whatever. But, I mean, in terms of, of running the meeting as long as I'm here, it hasn't been too bad. Everybody seems to be able to see what they want to say and can mostly tell who's voting on what, although not always. But it is very helpful to have all the, all the screens turned down except for, you know, board members and those speaking. That's, that's really helpful. Anybody else? Because we can.
I just want to go over some of the logistics that I understand about this. One, I made a mention of Brian, like if we could have a second TV so I'm not twisting my head, that actually would be kind of helpful. From what I understand, for public, we have the limited seats in here and an overflow in the library, is that how that works? That, I think, is a great idea. I'm just hoping that, that works out and I don't want any of the public to realize that we just, we like seeing you, we like you having in the room, but sometimes there's more. What I don't know is if any, like if Brian said something right now, is it getting picked up or do public need to come up to the stand?
I think mostly, but it's not going to be incredibly loud.
It sounds great, actually, like when.
There are eight, eight sitting rooms.
Okay, so even, so they don't necessarily have to, they can speak from where they're sitting. What's the logistics for someone who might want to speak from the overflow?
Our intention was to run and grab them.
Run and grab them, okay.
When they sign up for comment, if they're in the other room, we, we come in.
Okay, I just want, I just want that all out there. I do like the format. I do like the option. I've done, the two meetings we've had have been here, but I could be home too.
Yeah, I agree. Anybody else? Because we'll move on otherwise. I don't see anybody raising their hands. Okay. We have a bylaws review finally.
Yeah, so for our, for our audience, this might be a time that you get bored. Nobody will take any offense if you leave, but we, we have the exciting period of bylaws review going on. For board members, I'll share my screen with you. That's the wrong kind of share, sorry. Try to make this larger for good view. Slightly larger.
Yeah, it's a little small.
All right, so just a reminder to board members, just to kind of give you some, some background, these are the bylaws that were created when the, the board first unified in 2016. There was an amendment made to the bylaws in 2018 and it had been suggested, I want to say, actually dating back to like the summertime, I think Len first brought up the thought that we needed to kind of dig in and find the things that didn't match anymore and didn't, didn't line up. Share a proposal with the board that we just start chipping away at this. That proposal takes us into early 2022 to possibly get to a point where you could vote on amended bylaws, but the, the theory at this point would be just an opportunity to work through a few sections. I had proposed a schedule to you that included looking at sections one, two, and three this evening. And those sections, as you can see, are the purpose of the board, details about board membership and number of board members from each town, how those are calculated. And then the final section is a section about meetings and agenda. My suggestion to the board would be, I'm happy to facilitate this dialogue just to help keep it moving, but if you feel like you've had enough tonight, speak up and say we've had enough, you know, let's redraw this, redraw this game plan. So if there aren't any questions, it would probably make sense to start with.
Dave, I have, oh yeah, go ahead, Len, sorry. I'm sorry. Just looking at the timeline.
Yep.
After organization and officer, it goes to treasurer and district treasury. Isn't, and because. Isn't, and because I have to read, I looked at, there was E, and I didn't print it all out, that talks about committees.
Under what heading?
Well, it's not in the timeline.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Organization officers? No.
A, B, C, D.
D, E. Organization and officers, E is committees.
Yeah, that's a part of organization and officers.
It is.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah.
Cause if you keep going down further.
It's just coming right through here.
Okay, I'm fine. You eventually get to Roman numeral five, which is treasurer and district secretary. We're good. Thank you. Cool. Sorry for people that are looking at the screen and getting cross-eyed as I go back and forth. So the first section is the purpose of the board. It probably just makes sense to just pause. Um, I've got roughly the first three paragraphs that are on screen and I'm happy to just take notes on the Google Doc that I'm working on, just in terms of any recommended edits or strike throughs, et cetera. Again, none of this is board vote stuff. This is just kind of the editing process to, um, get us to a, a point in the future when you would vote on possible changes.
Is it worth, um, putting in the, you know, in the actual body of the bylaws, any amendment dates rather than just having it as a headed, a heading where it says amended on, on October 3rd, 2018, where it says, um, on the last line of the purpose, MR UUSD is governed by the articles as adopted on March 1st, 2016, but I think that would be a good spot to also say, and amended on October 3rd, and then if we do a further amendment, to have that listed in that spot so that there's no confusion, that, that those would be the most up-to-date bylaws.
That makes sense to me. Does that make sense to the group, what I've just typed up there? And I put it in red just to indicate like, hey, there's a new concept.
Right.
So keep me tracking the original approval and then any subsequent amendment dates within the, the text.
Yeah, that's the only thing I saw on that one.
Anyone else have any other thoughts on, um, what's on the screen at this point? Those first three paragraphs?
I'm not sure if I can see everybody. Um, if, if you're not being called on and you have something to say, just pipe up. Doesn't look like there's any other comments on that.
Hey, we just got number one done. Way to go, everybody. Board membership, number two. So I'll, we'll read the first line. The board shall consist of 11 members, directors elected for three-year terms, except for the initial board. Um, as we get into this next section, I think there are a couple of things that you could consider. Um, one would be the reference to the initial board, right? And talking about those terms due to the fact that we, these were written as we were approaching unification and now we're well past that. You could make a case for removing those references. Another, uh, piece that you see I highlighted in letter B was just, it felt important to make sure that we rechecked the census numbers to make sure that that proportion of four Clarendon, four Wallingford, two Shrewsbury, one Timoth was still appropriate. Um, you will notice that those numbers do still hold. What the census data is doing is somewhat interesting. If you look at 2010 versus 2020, Clarendon down 151 residents, that's 5.9%. Shrewsbury up 40, that's up 3.7%. Timoth down 60 residents, that's down 9.7. Wallingford up 53, which is up 2.5. And overall, for our four towns, that's down 118, the equivalent of 1.8%. But even with those adjustments, that ratio of four, four, two, and one, um, still holds. It still makes sense overall, but definitely wanted to make sure we were checking that data.
Is there anything? I guess it does say that after every census, we will do that, doesn't it?
Yes. Town representation recalculated promptly following that release.
Oh, I love it.
Yeah.
That was a Grant word.
For about 10 years.
So any thoughts on what we have in that kind of section A and B that are visible on screen? Any opinions? Please, Len.
A question. The last sentence in that big paragraph there.
In the letter B one?
Yes. It, it's, and I'm not sure what it meant. It says, "To the extent permitted by law, Clarendon and Wallingford shall continue to have equal representation." Now, does that mean that even if the census changes, that they will remain at whatever the number is, they have to be the same?
Yes. Our, our friend Grant, who was the guru of this, um, was responsible for that language, wisely so. I believe the situation is the statute requires that representation has to be proportional.
Right.
But realizing that Wallingford and Clarendon are going to not necessarily always align, as long as the law is not violated, they should be equal. I don't know where that threshold of where it wouldn't be permitted by law is. I'm not really sure what the answer to that is, but I, I couldn't suggest that removing that part would be wise, cause I think it makes sense.
No, no, I'm fine with that. I just, I wasn't sure what it meant.
Yeah.
But knowing that Grant wrote it, I'm fine with it.
It was sensitivity to the, to those, to the two big communities, cause I was on, you know, that they wouldn't feel that they had lost any power in the, in the board.
I'm fine, I just.
Does this?
Don't know.
Do we limit our board to 11?
We established that it's 11.
But do we limit it to 11?
No, it can change.
So starting at the top of A, it says, "Consist of 11 members elected for three-year terms." Then it talks about the initial.
Yeah. I'm just wondering whether, I mean, it, I guess it hasn't come up yet, but it, a board much bigger than 11 doesn't work very well.
I thought it said in here.
And having an odd number is always handy.
The board shall consist of 11 members. That seems very precise to 11.
Yeah.
And you know, it becomes tricky too, because we do guarantee later, I think, that Timoth is guaranteed one.
Yeah.
And so based on the proportionality piece, you kind of default into the 11, right? Because Shrewsbury is double, Timoth and Clarendon and Wallingford are double that, um, with equal numbers, so you kind of just land there.
Maybe that's, that's where the language for the, the last one that you questioned, Len, came from.
Yeah. And then in B, about middle of the paragraph, it says, "At no time will a town corresponding to a pre-existing member of school district have less than one board member."
Yeah.
So they didn't, you didn't even name it, which is good.
True, true, yeah.
No.
I, I think that's, it's still clear.
Yeah. Okay. No other comments on?
Um, does anybody do C? Just out of curiosity.
The handle of the property? I don't know.
Yeah, each outgoing member shall provide his or her replacement with all official property and documents of a continuous or consecutive nature. You know, if that, I mean, should we bother with that in there? I mean, we don't have, we aren't issued laptops, we don't, almost everything is online. It just seems sort of an unnecessary statement. We don't have official property.
Or our name cards.
Yeah.
It used to be, it used to be that we did have, we had envelopes, we had, um, pulling, pulling bath, uh, pages and stuff, and we also all had a, a thing on.
We had a policy book.
We had a policy book.
Right.
And we'd add to the parts and then we were done. Policy book, what's the next person coming on?
Right, but that doesn't happen anymore, cause everything's online. I remember getting piles of paper that I finally got rid of last year, actually.
We had to start the fire with something.
Actually, it did go on a bonfire now that you mentioned it, but yeah.
Well-used.
I don't know. I mean, it, it's sort of, I guess it doesn't hurt to have it in there, it just seems like an unnecessary.
I would, I liked the idea of striking it for the sole purpose of, I don't think it's the responsibility of the person leaving to give it to the person coming in.
Right. What are you going to give them?
Um, I think it is more of the board's responsibility to have more of an initiation, initial documentation. Um, like I would support changing it, that each new member would get something from the board to get them.
Orientated.
Orientated, there you go. Like an orientation package of some sort. I, I would agree to that, but I don't think.
That's true of them.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, I don't disagree with the idea. I don't know if we put it in bylaws.
I don't think we need to put it in the bylaws. It would be, I think it's something that we should explore further down the road.
I agree.
And if we do get something.
We have, and I think Maria actually wrote something up.
Yeah.
Didn't you, Maria?
Yeah. It looks like Sam probably used it.
Yes.
So.
I thought you sort of did an orientation packet.
I did, I do, and I, um, it needs, you know, regular review, but it's, it's helpful, I feel like. Do you think so, dear people? It's helpful to me refer to it myself, and I should refer it to you if I were periodically. Um, we have five minutes for this process, is that right? I just want to second about that.
No. In terms of time remaining? I'm not sure.
Um, in terms of just the, the time that the agenda has given to this.
Are you trying to move us along?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Actually, no, we've got 18 more.
Be blunt. Be blunt. Okay, um, so moving along.
Are we striking C?
Okay.
Yeah, we'd like C to be struck.
I, I would.
All right. Okay. Uh, letter E bears attention. This, this was a topic, um, if you recall, with George Ambrose's departure and Andrea Hawkins' election to the board, so this current language does not align with what the statute says. Um, I'd actually suggest we just try to figure out language that, that speaks to the right statutory reference and.
I, I was about to suggest that, that, that we have something in there that says that the board will follow the law when a position becomes vacant.
Agreed with that.
All right.
Since we don't have any option not to.
Right.
I'll, uh, I'll figure out some language to try to capture that, if that's okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, there's one final piece in, uh, number two, and that is a vacancy in a district office. So that would be a position like moderator.
Right.
Um, district clerk, which is different than board clerk, right? Doug is our board clerk, our district clerk is, is Crystal Usher. We actually do have a moderator vacancy because Grant was our moderator, so that will be something we'll need to attend to before we get to annual town meeting time. And our treasurer, uh, so those three roles would be the, the ones referred to here.
I mean, other than the citation, does that need any change in anybody's mind? Do we need to check that that's still correct?
You may want to do that.
Just check the citation.
Yeah, I think that's always a.
There's one up above.
Nifty idea. Right, exactly.
Sites it, isn't it? In the trunk.
Yep.
Yeah. Or it's changed. I mean, it might still be the right one, I don't know.
Yeah.
Cause they might've used the same number. Um, okay, is that as far as we were going to go today?
We were going to do number three, but we can stop if you'd like.
Um, oh, what time is it? It is H-24.
16 minutes ahead of schedule at the moment.
Okay, then keep up.
All right, so Roman numeral three is meetings and agenda.
Yep.
Um, this is the default place at the elementary schools, other places approved, meeting in each school at least once a year. Obviously, that's not been accurate in this COVID era, but that was certainly our practice beforehand. And then just to show you what's left on here, just two other things. Spells out that meetings held twice a month unless the board votes by two-thirds majority to meet more or less often, and then C speaks to the process, um, established in the open meeting law in terms of how agendas get constructed. So not a ton of content here.
I don't, I mean, since we have not followed the meeting at the elementary schools, I, I would like to leave it in there, but do we have, need to put something in if, if at all, if possible, so that we aren't breaking the bylaws when we don't follow through on that, even if it's a pandemic-related?
So like if conditions allow or something like that?
That's what I was thinking, have circumstances or conditions allow.
Yeah. I think that would be helpful, but other than that, I don't have anything. Anybody else? I see no hands. Okay.
Do we need to mention anything about hybrid? Cause even after pandemic, this might be, this is a very equity way of getting a hold of community members and people, our board members coming in.
Does it mention at all how the meetings will be held? In terms of virtual or?
Yeah, it doesn't. And BJ, I would suggest we not go there, cause you know, if you think about it, we were following statute and the open meeting law by having this meeting this way, right? Where we're creating access. I think as long as we adhere to the open meeting law, you utilize the flexibility that, that we have within that and not codify it in the bylaws, because something could change about the open meeting law, you know, and we wouldn't want to.
No, that's fine. Just wanted to bring it up.
Yeah, I mean, the whole of A is, is a little bit problematic because it, you know, the, the meeting dates and places will be published following the annual board reorganization meeting. Obviously, that timeframe, um, hasn't been happening, so.
Yeah, my, my thinking on this one is meetings will be held at Mill River Union High School. Is that forcefully saying that technically we, it will be here, or is it okay that?
Part of ours here.
But it follows up with at the elementary schools or other places as well.
Okay.
Could do BJ's house if we wanted.
I would recommend it, but.
Well, that's why you have to have someone here.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, so as long as it's.
Well, Len, where did you record that video a couple of years ago?
His house, by the way.
The hole in there?
That's true.
It wasn't a quorum.
Okay. But do we want to adjust that last, that last sentence? A tentative schedule of meeting dates and places will be published?
Yeah, the meet, the dates are always published, you know.
Right, but places.
The places are not decided early on, so like would you request?
Could we just get?
Striking that?
Well, just, I mean, we could say a tentative schedule of meeting dates will be published following the annual meeting and skip the places.
That's easy.
Okay. Is that okay with everybody?
Sure.
Okay.
And unless you have any recommendations for B or C, your bylaw work for the evening is done.
Oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was remarkable. Uh, committee business, and that means Len is up for personnel.
Yes, um, we had a personnel committee this evening, personnel committee meeting this evening, and it mentions contracts. We actually have no contracts to bring before the board for approval.
That shows we've got all the people we need.
Well, not quite, and I'm going to let, uh, Mr. Yount speak to that. There's, we get three things. There's usually board action requested, um, FYI, for example, um, three teachers have notified, uh, their wish for retirement at the end of this year.
Two officially.
No, three officially.
Three officially.
Sorry.
That's all. That's just the number.
Yep.
And underneath that is current postings, and under the current postings, one of the things that I noticed was special education paraeducators, we need 10 plus. So I asked David if he would be willing to speak to that.
Yeah, and I appreciate the chance to do so. And Coral, just to give a heads up, I may defer to you after I potentially miss anything, okay?
Yeah, that's fine. That's, that's all.
Len asked the question, what, what's the explanation behind that? Why do we have so many openings? And, and really, there are a few layers in my mind. One is the work of all of our paraeducators, let's be frank, the work of all of our support staff is really hard work. Uh, the way that those school and work days play out, the way that supporting students, sometimes individuals, sometimes groups of students, uh, the way a school day is navigated is challenging. The folks that we have in those roles are really, really committed to that work and they're really, really committed to the students, but it is tough work. Um, as a result, we do see turnover in those ranks that, that does occur. And I shared with the personnel committee earlier, you know, in a normal school year, non-pandemic, we probably have a, a rolling three or four paraeducator openings, but paraeducator openings. But in a year like this year or last year, you know, we're in the double digits, and that's tough. Another piece behind that is honestly finances, you know. So our employment circumstances with our support staff agreement in terms of the wage scale and what starting pay is, there are other jobs that folks can get out in the community that do pay more and are not as challenging. And that dynamic is tough for us. Just to give you some context in terms of how support staff pay scale is organized, it's based on level of education to an extent. So there's a column of wages based on if someone has a high school diploma, if someone has an associate's degree, if someone has a bachelor's degree, and then we have a column if one of our support staff folks has a teaching license. And each of those columns has higher pay levels. But the first two columns in particular, the high school and the associate's level, we don't have the capacity, based on the way those are structured, to sometimes pay people what they can get in other roles. So that creates an employee shortage that's being experienced all around the world and all around Vermont, but we feel it very acutely as well. Coral, I would defer to you. Anything else you would add to just describe reasons for shortages?
Yeah, no, I think that you summed it up beautifully, Dave. The other thing that I would just add, just on the student side, is that, you know, this pandemic has really intensified student needs in a number of ways, but in particular, the behavioral arena. This is not news to any of you. You're reading about it all over the newspapers and the media. We know that this pandemic has intensified student needs, and that can be, that can be very, very difficult for staff to keep up with that pace when they're already stressed out and dealing with their own situations. So I will just say that some of the needs that we are grappling with were unknown to us and continue to evolve this year, and that's really got us scrambling in some ways. And that includes students that are coming to us from other districts that we are billing those costs back to. So we're doing a lot of that work as well, so it's not necessarily just all, you know, students that are residents here.
Well, and I want to thank the paraeducators because I know they're doing, and yourself as well, and I know other folks that thank you tonight. But, and it wasn't my intent to point it out in a negative way. I wanted to make sure that folks understand why. Because if you just look at the numbers, you kind of say, what does that mean?
What's on here?
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, I appreciate the input, and that's all I was looking for, really, and thank you. Next meeting is January 5th, 2022.
How about that?
At 6:00.
Everyone can gasp now.
Yeah. That's it for me.
Okay, policy. BJ?
Policy. I have some policies to approve. excited about this. Okay, so I'm going to move to approve D18 travel reimbursement. Do I have a motion? Len?
You made the motion, right?
I made the motion, so a second. I'll go through it. All in favor? Raise your hand.
Put it on screen.
Yep.
Okay. Help keep an eye behind me, please.
We'll try.
Any against? No? Any abstentions? I don't see anything. Okay, so that's, 18 is approved. Next, move to approve policy E14, capitalization of assets. Thank you, Len.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, any against? Any abstentions? I don't hear any, so approved. Okay, I move to approve a policy. We're busy. I move to approve a policy D20, prevention of conflict of interest in procurement. Anybody want to second this one?
Sure.
Got Len. Okay, all in favor? Good. Any against? Any abstentions? Okay, so it looks approved. Okay, one more. I move to approve the policy F1, school-community behavioral expectations. Do I have a second?
Use a second.
Okay, Len's a second. Discussion, or discussion? Forgot the discussion points. Okay, all in favor? Okay, any against? Nope. Any abstentions? Not that I can see. Thank you. And our next meeting is December 14th at 5:30. So here in this room.
Thank you.
I'm all good.
Good. Thanks, BJ.
Personnel will be in here too.
Oh, good point. Buildings and grounds. Do you have a report to do?
Not really. We haven't been doing the meetings and stuff. And then we had a committee for financials, and it really hit both shoulders. The repairs we're doing to the former central office building and the costs that are going to be coming forward with that seem to be very, very huge. I want to have a talk with Gary about that. So I'm either going to have a meeting coming up on, I think it's the 7th, which is next week, Tuesday, or the 14th, which are we doing a 15th December meeting yet? Do we talk about that? That may be the way to hold that off until then and get some more information on that.
We're going to be talking about it in the finance report, too.
Yeah. There's a motion coming to that regard that Gary and Stan can speak to as well.
Good. Other than that, we're still doing pretty good. I don't believe we've got our buses yet. Still looking at those empty spot back there to put a nice bus in, but we'll see how it happens.
Okay, thank you.
And then we'll move on.
Community engagement. Maria.
Thank you. At this point, we haven't had a meeting since I last reported at the previous meeting, but our next meeting will take place at Mill River on, I'm looking at my calendar right here, on December 14th at 6:30. So after policy, our next community conversation is on the 20th. And the board members who at this point will be present are Bjorn, myself, and Sam Green. Does that sound doable for all of you? I'll suggest to me. Do you know who that we're bringing to?
The 20th?
Yep, at 6:30. And that will be, I mean, it will be virtual, yeah, a Google Meet. And we'll be putting out an invitation for that that we look for. And again, for, you know, as I do at every meeting, I want to encourage community members to part in that because it is really, it's been a rewarding experience every time I've taken part in it. I find that people show up to that who do not all agree with me, and for certain have not all voted for me, but I feel like it's an important chance for me to talk with people and hear about what community members have as concerns and as questions, and maybe things that we're not being entirely transparent or clear about that we need to be aware of. And not that we're not being transparent because we have some malicious intent, but because we don't realize that people care about certain things and we sort of just carry on with them regardless. I think that this is a great time if people don't understand why the board made a decision about a certain thing. This is an opportunity for you to come and say, what's going on? Why did you say that? Sometimes people bring things to community to public comment that are really legitimate concerns, and this is a really great place to talk to us about them. For example, if you have a specific question for a school board member who makes the decisions to behave in a certain way, you can say, for example, Maria, why don't you take part in the plan? For example. There's lots of other things you can ask us about, but those are opportunities to talk to us one-on-one for about decisions that we've made. So I would really appreciate any community member, be you, some case taxes in the district, a parent, a school employee, feel free to come to the community conversation because they can be really great. And I would like to thank our board members who have signed up to for community conversations in 2022, Sam, Len, Andrea, Ambrose, and the rest of you. I will continue to send you emails and play you a game.
Thank you, Maria. I was waiting for you, that part of it. I was going to say, don't you want to remind us?
That would be you, too.
Yep, I got it. Yeah, okay. All right. Negotiations, we are still, oh, go ahead.
It'd be nice, Maria, we could include our new student members in that sometimes?
Oh, 100%. That would be a great thing for you to take part in.
Yeah, one at a time. It'd be good to get some experience there.
That was great.
She'll send you a sign up, too. Okay, all right. Negotiations, we don't have a whole lot of, I mean, I don't have any real update. We're still continuing to negotiate with the Teachers Association, and we are waiting for the support staff negotiating group to get back to us on a date that will work for our first meeting for them because their contract has to be renegotiated now, too. And that's all. So finance.
Liz? Hi, everybody. So I'm going to start with the approval of pay orders and payroll. I'm going to start with pay orders. From the general fund, we have a pay order in the amount of $53,961.53. Also, from the general fund, we have a pay order in the amount of $10,172.89. From our after-school program, we have a pay order in the amount of $338.32. And from our food program, we have a pay order in the amount of $56,904.53 for a grand total of $121,377.27. From our student activity fund, we have a pay order from Mill River in the amount of $3,753.36. From Clarendon Elementary, we have a pay order in the amount of $60.39. From Tinnit, we have a pay order in the amount of $133.53 for a total of $3,947.28. For payroll this evening, we have regular payroll dated November 19th in the amount of $601,854. And I would make the motion that we, I'm sorry, am I making, am I stating a question?
Yes. I think that works best, and I won't say a thing.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right. So I would like to make the motion that my fellow board members accept and approve these pay orders and this payroll as designated.
I'll second.
BJ seconded.
All right, all in favor? And I, so I don't know if I can change my view. See everybody? I think I can see everybody. I can't see everybody there because you're too small.
Okay, everybody on camera voted yes. Everybody here voted yes.
Great, thank you so much.
Yep.
So I have the RSSU building proposal. Would Stan go present that?
I believe the motion is for you, Liz, but Stan and Gary, I think are both still with us, can speak to the nuts and bolts of it. It probably makes sense to make the motion, get the second, and then get to discussion so that the group can talk about it.
Okay, all right. So I'll start with that. So whereas the funding sources that I will speak in just a moment are intended to be utilized for the following purposes: for the purpose of renovations to the former RSSU office building as necessary to serve as the home for the foundation program. From the SRT2 grant, $256,939. From the 2018 bond fund, $14,033. From the general fund, $45,000. From the building sinking fund, $284,027.27. For a total of $600,000, I move that the board approve expenditures of up to $600,000 for Phase II value engineering and construction work for the former RSSU office building through the existing project management group EEI for these purposes. The construction manager, facilities department, and the business office are to work with the special education director in order to value engineer a quality project meeting the program needs. Within the stipulated financial limitations, additional board approval will be required for any costs over and above disapproved amounts should the value engineering identify components whose additional cost can be justified as providing beneficial impact to the district. So any discussion?
No, I'm just going to second.
Have you had a second yet?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Sam.
I was going to say, I think I heard someone. Thank you.
Okay, yep. Do we want Gary to give us a run-through?
Excuse me. If you remember from one of our previous meetings, we had authorized the group EEI, who had done our performance contract for us, to proceed with some preliminary design work associated with the renovations of the building in question. They took a look at minimum costs from a code and safety standpoint to get us in the building. That project would run in the vicinity of $450,000. The other extreme, if you will, to give us everything that we would need within the building and to meet, if you will, the wish list of the program, would be on the other extreme of $800,000. I think it was $880,000 if I remember correctly. So in talking with Stan and the design team and with Coral about specific needs for that program, we feel like we can value engineer our way into a project in the $600,000 range that will meet Coral's needs and goals for that program and give us a good 20-year building that we can basically market to others, if you will. So that's where we are at this point. We're trying to get approval to proceed with a not-to exceed value of $600,000. But if we find ourselves in a position through value engineering, let's use the example of a $620,000 project would give us this added push that we need, we would come back to the board looking for that additional approval for that $20,000 extra. But at this point, we're seeking the $600,000 believing we can obtain what the program needs for that value.
Is this...
Stan, anything that you wanted to add to that?
The only thing I want to add is in regards to the, you know, the funding sources that we recommend to use to get to that $600,000 number. None of those numbers will have any kind of impact that would affect any program, school program in the district in a negative way. The SRT2 grant, the funds that we had left over, you know, the current SRT2 grant that we have, the Bahamas proceeds that are left over for projects that have been completed, general fund budget $45,000, that comes out of the district capital maintenance line that we have in the general fund budget. And the building sinking fund, if we use $284,000 of that fund, we will still have $280,000 remaining in that district building sinking fund.
I'll open it up for questions.
Wait, he's still talking.
He is? Stan, you muted yourself.
Is it there? No, I'm good. That's all I wanted to say.
Oh, okay. You were still talking, and we didn't know.
He's still over there.
Oh, maybe I'm on delay then.
Yeah, there's some latency there.
Okay. That was weird.
That was weird.
Does anyone have questions for Stan or Gary?
Do we have, like, plans we can look at here? Because I'm thinking that little building, you could build like three of them for $600,000 is what my personal thing is. So I'd love to see how that money is being spent, or what that looks like. What does $600,000 look like?
Gary, why don't you explain all those efforts?
One of the very expensive components, if you will, of the project is actually asbestos abatement. As you can imagine, due to the age of that building, with the upper rate project there is close to $110,000 of asbestos abatement associated with that project. The building itself has what we call very good bones. It's in excellent shape structurally, but there are a lot of needs from a safety and code standpoint that are required. I don't think that we would be able to build from scratch anything of this nature that would be compatible or comparable to what we will end up with the project there for the same dollar value. As opposed to, well, we originally had some conversations about renovating that building into office space. I still maintain that it doesn't make sense for a project of that nature when we have office space available to us, if you will, at the high school because of the vacancies that we have there. But for a program such as Coral's program, where we are looking for a separate building, I think the renovations here make excellent sense. We would be reconfiguring some of the interior, but not much. We would be having to put in an ADA bathroom, ADA ramp, the second means of egress. the second means of egress, fire alarm systems. Um, we would also be looking at making the building energy efficient with additional insulation, LED lighting, such as we've done in all of our other buildings. So those type of, that type of a project does start to add up after a while. We don't, BJ, we don't have final plans for the project yet because part of the conversation about value engineering is, is getting to the point of deciding which components are really worth the additional money. So we, we have a basic layout that we've developed for the building. The interior, if you can remember what it looks like, it really has not changed that much. We have eliminated one of the small offices, but are really maintaining those two larger areas as large classrooms. Uh, we would be putting in some kitchen facilities um, so that, some life skills can be learned associated with cooking and washers and dryers and that type of thing. We will be installing air conditioning so that we can use the building throughout the summer. So pretty, pretty, um, pretty advanced renovations to the building indeed, but well worth it, I believe.
Um, and BJ, this is Coral, I'm just gonna add to, um, just offer a reminder that one of the options that we did explore pretty carefully for this program was an investment towards a purchase of a new, um, modular classroom setup. That option though, after some careful exploration, was pretty quickly taken off the list as, as being viable to us for a number of reasons. One of those reasons being that those modular, uh, situations, they, they do not accommodate expansion over time. You, we would not be able to expand this program really at all beyond whatever nuts and bolts we get from a modular. The other thing is that my understanding from talking with some contractors and consulting Gary, pricing of those modular buildings for what we would need is pretty, pretty skyrocketed, um, right now and probably gonna go a heck of a lot higher before this pandemic is over. Um, and with the contractors I spoke with, good luck getting one within the next three years. Um, so, we are on a timeline. So there were a number of reasons why modular was, was taken right off the list pretty quickly, but I just want to remind that, that that option was explored and the price differential is, is not really worth it, so.
Gary, I have a question, this is Adrian. What's the timeframe for, you know, if we pass this tonight, what's the timeframe for all of this work? I mean, it's extensive work, I'm not expecting it, you know, next week.
Yeah, the work is fairly extensive, um, but we could, not realistically start tomorrow, but the day after tomorrow possibly. We could actually be started with the project. The goal is to have that building occupiable by the start of the academic year next year. So we would be working the rest of this winter season over the summer and have her ready to go by the start of the academic year.
And I don't know Coral or Gary, how many, how many kids are we currently expecting to serve in that space?
Uh, well, right at the moment, we are projecting that we're going to be starting with 14. Um, that's my roughest estimate, but, um, I am starting to receive some calls about students from other districts potentially coming into this program on tuition and I can't really, I can't really commit to accommodating that until I, until I know which direction the board is gonna take on this. But we're projecting starting out with 14. And that's, uh, that's quite an increase. I haven't let this program capacity go over nine. Since I started it, I haven't, I haven't let us go over that nine. So the 14 is, is actually upward from that threshold.
What do you hope the capacity will be once these renovations are done?
Well, there's what I hope for it to be and then there's what I'm told it to be.
Well, based on the renovation plan, they.
The occupancy is 65, which seems very high to me for that building. So I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna give you two figures. The occupancy is 65, that's obviously, that's like running homeschool at that. But, um, I could foresee an occupancy eventually in there of even 25, which would not surprise me at all knowing sort of where we're going with social, emotional, and behavioral needs of, of kids, so. The other thing I'll add, you know, I don't know, I don't know that folks are aware or not, but we would be sending the particular students out of district at anywhere from $65,000 to $90,000 a year, um, in tuition. So, so I will just say, uh, you know, if, if not for a program like this, then you're either gonna, you're either gonna pay now or you're gonna pay later and you're gonna pay much more later, taking the work for it. So I, I just want to point out that when you look at those costs and you look at the rising costs of tuition that are now impacting all of, you know, your independent schools and smaller programs, you, you want to make sure you got a program in-house to, to deal with this long-term, for sure.
I, I really applaud all the work that's been done because there's, there's not enough programs out there. They're very expensive and we could be very helpful to this area with having, with having this program, you know, in a, in a suitable building with, with proper staffing and, and I think it could, we could really be of value to, to the rest of the county and maybe even some of the surrounding counties.
And I also think, you know, just to emphasize the point, I think that as we talk about inclusivity and equity, you know, we are talking about a historically very disadvantaged population of children that we are able to keep here, that we are able to love and, and take care of as our own and that's what we're in the business to be doing. Um, so these, these kids deserve that, that commitment for peace.
Thanks, Coral. I don't know, Liz, if you're, if you're willing to, to call the question or would you like me to do that?
Yeah, go ahead, Adrian.
If there's no other comments, I would, um, I guess I would make a motion to, to, I'm, I'm not sure what the.
Do we have to vote on it?
What?
She made the motion and we have a second.
We just have to vote.
Oh, okay, so I guess we'll just vote, thank you. Um, all in favor of, of the, the motion that, that Liz had read out because it was really long and extensive? Okay, please raise your hand.
Looks unanimous.
Okay, it, it appears to be unanimous, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Yes.
Okay, and I want to thank Coral because this is really an incredible program and you've been just really strong advocates for changing our district, so thank you. And before I let folks go, as part of committee business, if you have an update, if I may, on the FY '23 budget. Um, so the finance committee has been meeting weekly with district administration to discuss, plan, and develop the fiscal year '23 budget. We are preparing to present the FY '23 budget to the board at the December 15th meeting for your approval, hopefully in January. Factors impacting the FY '23 budget include: Act 173 funding changes that shift reimbursement for special services to a block grant model resulting in a reduction of funds available to the district for these purposes; Reduced student enrollment, which is both a statewide and local pattern dating back to the early 2000s; Entry into a reduction of funds available to the district from the state education fund; and lastly, fewer tuition revenue to students. Rolling over our current budget to next year would result in a modest expenditure increase of 2.56%, but would result in a projected tax rate increase of over 10%. The committee deems this unacceptable and as it is too significant and unreasonable. Rather, the committee has targeted $1 million in reductions in order to contain any tax increase to between 2 and 3%. The following areas are being considered as areas of reduction to mitigate tax rate increases: Organization and reduction of building-based and central office administrative roles; Attrition and reduction in support staff roles throughout the district; Attrition and reduction in teaching positions throughout the district; Reduction in technology and professional development spending; And reductions in transportation program offerings. Each of these considerations is carefully analyzed by the committee and includes quantitative and qualitative input from our district leaders in order that impact on students, families, programs, and taxpayers be fully considered and weighed. And there's good news, there is a surplus of almost $90 million in the state education fund left over from fiscal year '22. The governor and administration are returning half of this surplus, or $45 million, to property taxpayers. The forecasted FY '23 homestead yield announced today is $13,846 compared to $11,317 for fiscal year '22, which is the current property year, current property tax year. The forecasted FY '23 income yield is $16,705 compared to $13,770 for FY '22. The average homestead tax rate is forecasted to decrease by 21.4 cents compared to FY '22. The statewide base non-homestead tax rate is forecasted to decrease by 22.7 cents. In the Mill River District, we are on track for a $0.2477 homestead decrease from $1,5543 to $1,3066. It is my pleasure to announce this evening that in light of the education fund surplus, the homestead and income tax yields announced today, together with our budgeting strategies and priorities, that we in the Mill River District are on track for a 15.94% tax decrease. I want to thank the members of the finance committee and members of the administrative team for their hard work and time commitments these last few weeks in planning the FY '23 budget. The next meeting of the finance committee is Monday, December 6th at 5:00 PM and we are meeting via virtual meetings virtually. And that's all I have, thank you so much.
Thank you, Liz. Very interesting information. Moving on to the ad hoc committees, um, I don't think Matt had to leave, so Lynn, you're up, or whoever's reporting from here.
The ad hoc student retention committee, um, we had a meeting scheduled on November 23rd, but we did not have a quorum, so therefore we did not have a meeting. The next meeting is December 7th, from 5:30 to 6:30, that will be a virtual meeting. And again, at this point, what we're trying to look at are what kind of questions we may be asking folks to get answers in terms of retention. And also looking at, um, an exit, not an exit survey, but a survey provided at the end of each year to community members, parents, to get an idea of, um, how the year went. That actually was included in our board goals.
Right.
So, um, but that's where we're at. Next meeting, December 7th, 5:30 to 6:30, virtual. And I think I have sent out invitations already. And I think, Anne, you posted the agenda for that ad hoc, yeah. So, we're good to go. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We are on to transacting other legal business. Uh, the, the thing that's written in there is board meetings at elementary schools. I don't know how we all feel since we have sort of, um, decided on, on a hybrid meeting format. I'm not sure how we can translate that to going to the elementary schools. Sorry. I, I don't know if anyone has any suggestions.
Yeah, good, we could do a field trip from us, two or three people. Get on the computer, you, you bring yourself in, you talk with. I, I think the, uh, the schools and the districts like to have their kids come up and perform. That, we always have something when we went to those.
I don't know if we can do that realistically with COVID, Doug.
Could be tough, could be tough.
Well, I think it might be impossible. Oh, Maria, go ahead.
Thanks, um, yeah, I think that this might be something that we should table for the rest of, until we have a clear picture of where we're headed. And also, I do appreciate seeing students, but I don't want to lay having to prepare for an evening event, even if we could bring people together in a space. I don't want to lay that on teachers right now, I feel like they have quite enough on their plates.
So we can, we can readdress this in a couple months and see whether things have lightened up, um, you know, whether people feel comfortable having, having an in-person meeting, which is what it would take for us to do that. But until winter's over, um, you know, maybe, maybe come spring when everything can be open and, and airing out or maybe there'll be some miraculous change in the pandemic and we'll all feel more comfortable in the same room, so. The other thing is.
Can, can that, Anne, can you put that in the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just want to make sure that's in the minutes that we will revisit it.
Yeah.
Again.
I'm gonna say revisit it when we feel a little bit more safer about the.
Right.
This situation.
Yep. Um, the other thing that we had talked about, or that I had added to the agenda was to discuss finishing up our goals work. If you want, we can put that off until the beginning of, of January and, and do it at a first meeting or we could take a little bit of the next meeting and do it then. What's your pleasure, folks? I don't even know, Liz disappeared, so I don't have her, um, expertise. I was trying to find all the, all the schedules to see how much we have left, but I know we have at least one more session of working through the goals.
At least, yeah.
Can we, what about like doing a 6 o'clock, one, the opposite meeting that we have personnel?
Could do that, that would be, that would work.
Just a dedicated one hour to it.
But we have a meeting on the 15th, right? A personnel meeting, didn't you say the 15th?
Not a personnel, no.
Oh, who was on the 15th?
Just regular board.
Just regular, okay, I thought somebody else had added something on to the 15th. We could do that, if, if everybody's comfortable meeting at, at 6 o'clock instead of 7 for the next meeting and, and try and work through the rest of, or at least make it December 15th.
That's December 15th.
Could I have a show of hands that that's, okay, we'll do that? Okay, that, that will be done. I don't have anything else, does anybody else have anything they want to bring up?
Not for the next board meeting, but a reminder to the board, and I'll send this to you via email. Monday, the 13th, we have a joint training with the board and the leadership team. So that's the principals and central office administrators with Dr. Brown. That's a 4:30 to 6:30 location somewhere in this building, to be determined. But I'll, uh, I'll, uh, send that by email just to remind you.
Okay, thank you. So I guess we move into agenda building.
Stan, Ray.
Oh, Stan, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay. Um, I just wanted to follow up with something in regards to what Liz was talking about tax rates so that the board and the public, uh, fully understand, you know, what, where we are as of today. Um, what we, the information we got today was a property yield number and that's just one-third of the component that goes into the calculating the tax rate. So, you know, based on the information we had, you know, the tax rate would decrease 15%, but there's two other components, the equalized pupil number and the common level appraisal number that are still unknown. And, you know, with the tax commissioner had said today, more than likely with the common level appraisal number, which is based off real estate sales, uh, that number's gonna affect the tax rate in a negative way and cause it go the, you know, the other way. So we don't know that information as of the moment. We won't know that probably until sometime after mid-December. I just wanted to make clear that, that that is not gonna be the decrease. Um, you know, when, once the final budget is completed.
Thank you for bursting that bubble, Stan. We appreciate it, but it's good to hear reality. And we'll be getting those numbers soon and, and, um, the CLAs are for each, for each town, so as the state works through that, um, we'll all hear what, what those numbers are gonna be. So, I guess we're back to agenda building, I don't see anybody else raising their hand. Does anybody have something they want on the agenda for us?
Committee business, I'm assuming. Committee business, I'm assuming we might want to start adding the student report back in.
Sure.
Which honestly was just how things, your opinion of how things were going.
Yeah, you don't have to do, we'd just like to hear what's going on in the school because most of us, I don't know, most of us don't have kids at Mill River anymore. My kids all graduated and are gone, so I don't have that student voice in my ear saying, "Mom, fix this." So, so you guys are the voice of the student body. Keep that in mind. Okay, thank you. That's a good idea. Anything else, people? Anybody, virtual? Okay. We do have a, a quick executive session, and I'm not quite sure how we do that with all of, all of the people here. I think that would be-
Maybe the board goes to another location?
Yeah, that might be easiest.
Just because we got the camera, that's-
Because we will come back just to adjourn, but I don't think there will be anything to report.
Is there going to be another meet for the virtual people? For them to join?
Oh. Dave?
Yeah, that's an interesting question.
Can you not just have people leave the room for the period of time?
I think we might have to.
Or go to the library, or go somewhere like that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, guys.
Maybe we have to kick everybody else out of this meeting, too.
Um, I don't know, student reps, they're not official members yet.
I don't think it'd be appropriate to have them be a part of this conversation. No.
Maybe give us a separate meet and have people in the room go someplace else.
Yeah. So, if you guys would all exit the, well, we have to, we have to actually-
Need it.
-join, I mean, make a motion to-
Adrian, are you cool if I'm going home?
Oh, absolutely. I'm sorry, guys, you don't have to wait for us to adjourn. We do have to, to-
You will someday.
-make a motion to go in executive session and do all the, the proper, it is walking away. My language is down.
I just wanted to say thank you for really liking hybrid shopping rate. I hope you had a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye. Thank you.
Bye.
Okay.
We'll give you all the language stuff, Anne.
Because it's not clear, it's not executive, as it were, yet.
I'm sorry, Sam, I missed what you said.
Just to remind you that we're not executive, as it were, virtually yet.
Right.
There's still-
Yep, absolutely. We actually still have to make a motion to go into executive session.
So, I, I mean, moved or seconded, or what would you like?
Okay.
We got to do the wording.
Yep.
Although we lost the note ticker.
I would like to make a motion to have an executive session because premature public general knowledge would clearly place the board and the individuals involved at a substantial disadvantage.
I will second that.
Thank you, Sam.
And then we have a second motion.
Are you keeping track of that, Dave?
No, we need to vote.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
So, then we need to vote.
Okay. All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, thank you, that's unanimous. And now we have to vote, we have to have a motion to actually go into executive session.
So, I'd make, go ahead.
Yeah, I move that we move into executive session.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
At 9:16.
9:16.
So, here's my dilemma in this moment.
Okay, hold on, let's vote.
I'm sorry.
Okay, are we all voting? Do in favor? Go into executive session? Okay, thank you, that was unanimous.